Evening. Welcome to the July 20th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of the City of Longview. Last month, we introduced four new commissioners, one of which couldn't be present, so we want to publicly introduce Heath Amberlin, who is with us tonight, and we welcome him and enjoy, will enjoy working with him, as with the other three. We will now have Commissioner Harkey, who will conduct the invocation. Please stand.
I was praying. Dear Lord, thank you for this day, and just thank you, Father, for all of your many blessings, and just thank you, Father, for allowing us the freedom to come here and, and just to, and to, to hear these cases, Father. We just pray for wisdom, Father, as we hear these cases. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the last meeting. If there are no changes, we will entertain a motion in a second.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The agenda item titled Citizen Comment is next. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? This portion of Citizen Comment would be comments that are made other than the public hearing items that we have on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak on an item that's on the agenda, please wait until that time. When you do come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the public record. Do we have anyone that would like to make public comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The commission also considers plats. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed will be: the public hearing will be opened, and testimony will be heard in the following order: first from staff, then the applicant, then the general public, and that includes those in support and in opposition to the request. If you are part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the commission, please begin by stating your name and address, and try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed, and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the commission will vote on the request, and zoning requests and the planning and zoning commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the city council on August 12. Moving on to regular agenda item A. Angela, will you introduce it, please?
Yes, ma'am. Consider application P-21-05, weighing investments additions filed by Richard Henson to plat approximately 2.386 acres of part of Block 6 of Thomas Manor, Unit 5, into nine lots located south of Wayne Drive, west of Gene Drive. And I'll go into my staff report. The applicant is requesting to plat nine lots located south of Wayne Drive. The applicant has not installed the fire protection, water, or sewer services, or provided an estimate for the required infrastructure with a letter of credit prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. However, he has addressed all other comments, so staff does recommend approval, with the condition that an estimate for the fire protection, water, and sewer services be provided, along with the letter of credit for the amount, or that the infrastructure be installed prior to plating, to filing the plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Do any of the commissioners have questions of the staff?
I do. The two-family, TF2, what is the size restrictions on those?
So, they submitted prior to the UDC being adopted, so they followed, they were, they fell under the previous zoning ordinance, and so they were grandfathered in. So whatever the zoning ordinance was at that time, that's what they, they abide by.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Angela, forgive my ignorance, but is a letter of credit for those services typical in refiling like this?
Yes. Typically, they either install all the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, the fire hydrants, and the street, or they provide that estimate with a letter of credit. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in support of? We'll go to the support side first. Anyone in support of this request? If so, please come to the microphone and introduce yourselves. Is there anyone that has opposition to this agenda item? Same procedure. Any additional questions or comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Is that motion with the condition or without?
With, with the condition.
Thank you for that clarification. Sure. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Regular agenda item B. Angela, will you introduce it?
Yes. This is a public hearing will be held to consider application Z-21-13 filed by American Electric Power, AEP, requesting a rezone from agriculture to heavy industrial zoning district for approximately 5.33 acres of abstract 256 M. Man survey, Track 3-02, Section 1, located at the west intersection of West Loop 281 and J.C. Drive. The applicant is requesting a rezone from ag to heavy industrial zoning district for this property here located on the west side of West Loop 281. AEP would like to build a telecom office and shop at this location. Loop 281 is classified as a principal arterial roadway, which is appropriate for this type of development, as long as, as long as access management is followed. And as you can see here in the zoning map, their current location to the south is also zoned heavy industrial as well. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Hearing none, we'll ask for the applicant. Is the applicant present, and would you like to speak?
Hello. My name is Brian McNune. I'm an architect, 3556 Yuri Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71105, and I'll answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions of the applicant?
A stupid, silly question. Where are you going to park all these trucks and let you build something there?
The, all we're going to build is a very small telecom office, or SWEPCO is going to build, and you'll see it right down in the bottom corner. It's a very small building, and the sole purpose of that building is to bring their trucks in and install their radios and telephone equipment. The, the service bays are conditioned, air-conditioned, as well as the offices. There won't be any, like, oil changes or heavy maintenance going on in that building. It's strictly for telecom equipment.
No, I drove by there Saturday, and it was packed. I wondered how in the world you're going to get a building in there, but I say it's a small building.
Well, this is, this is actually four projects that we're doing for SWEPCO, and part of those trucks, I believe, will be located in Shreveport once that lay-down yard gets set up, so they'll be a little more dispersed and less concentrated here.
Thank you, Mr. McNune. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this agenda item? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Any additional comments or questions from the commissioners? We will close the public hearing and call for the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Regular agenda item C. Thank you, Angela, for introducing it.
Yes. This is a public hearing will be held to consider application PD-21-01 filed by Tebow Properties LLC to amend PD-88-01 to allow for an expansion of existing car wash for approximately .557 acres of abstract 177 William Robinson survey, Track 34, Section 3, located at 3325 Gilmer Road. The applicant is requesting to amend an existing planned development for a car wash located at 3325 Gilmer Road. The existing car wash has six bays along Gilmer Road, and then has vacuum bays to the west of it, behind the car wash bays. The applicant is proposing to add additional five bays where the vacuum bays currently are. They're also planning to add an office, and then relocate the, the vacuum stations to the rear of the property, which would be a total of 10 wash bays and then eight vacuum bays. And through the development process, they will meet all other City of Longview codes. Gilmer Road is a tech-stocked roadway and a principal arterial, and this development is appropriate as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. Staff, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff?
So, the entrance will stay the same, and there, the first setback, the first building will stay in the same place. It's just they're adding to the back of the property?
That is correct. They're going to actually remove one of the bays to the south that is too close to the property lines and the other buildings, and so they'll have five bays in the front instead of the six, and then they'll add an additional five bays in the back behind it where the vacuums are now, and then add the vacuums along the back property line with the office.
So, the vacuums that are looking pretty close right now, those will not be too close to the other building either?
That is correct. Yes.
Makes sense.
And these will all be self-wash bays, or any automated?
That is correct. They should be all self-wash.
Thank you, Angela. Is there, is the applicant present? The applicant present. Please come to the microphone. Tell us about your project.
Michael Arnold, 319 McFerran Road, Hallsville. And, you know, Angela explained it pretty well. You know, if y'all have any other questions, I can help with.
Do you have any additional questions of Mr. Arnold? Is that correct?
Yes.
Michael Arnold? Who's the applicant?
With that removal of the southmost bay, you'll be able to drive completely around.
Yes. Well, I have a one-way drive over there.
I understood that there are, that the entrance and exit will not change, but will there be improvements to those?
They, they'll, they'll stay the same as they are. They'll, they'll just clean them up.
Okay.
The existing curb cut is, is concrete. It turns into asphalt onto the property. All that will become concrete and be cleaned up.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Okay.
All right. We're now opening the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this agenda item? Please come to the microphone. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the request? Seeing or not hearing none, we will close the public hearing and call for the motion in a second.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Regular agenda item D. Angela, please.
Thank you. This is a public hearing will be held to consider application PD-21-02 filed by Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated to amend the site plan for construction of a self-storage mini warehouse for Lot 1, Block 1 of Superior Storage Subdivision located at 3821 McCann Road.
Two commissioners will have to leave the room, and our assistant here, Mr. Noon, will take over. Thank you.
Go ahead, Angela, with your staff presentation.
Yes, sir. So, the applicant is requesting to revise a site plan for PD-19-01 for self-storage mini warehouse. This development is located at the southwest intersection of Spring Hill Road and McCann Road. The previously approved planned development, site plan showed two, right here, showed two self-storage mini warehouse buildings with an office building totaling 100,000 square feet. Each building was to be approximately 50,000 square feet in size and be split-level, two-story. The applicant is proposing to increase the conditioned storage area to 125,000 square feet, and increase the maximum building height of the second building to a three-levels, three-story split-level building. The previous plan showed a proposed second driveway for emergency access only after discussions with our Fire Plan Examiner. That driveway is no longer needed, and that has been removed from the plans, as you can see here on the computer screen. All conditions of the previous planned developments will remain the same, which includes if the applicant were to ever install a fence along McCann Road, the fence would be required to be a decorative wrought iron fence with masonry columns. No outside storage of vehicles, trailers, recreational vehicles, or anything similar will be allowed on this site. The buildings, the buildings will have a minimum front setback of 30 feet from the front property line, 10 from the rear, and the side property lines. The buildings will be metal buildings with metal roofs. However, the building will be partially clad with masonry veneer with synthetic plaster veneer panels, which are Stucco light, and if you've been to the site, it is a pretty nice building. A portion of the exterior will have a smooth-faced panel in the porch. These porches will be entryways into the building. They will have, and they do have one monument side that will not exceed 50,000 square feet. The applicant will adhere to the landscape plan that was a previously, that was previously approved, and they will maintain the landscape area along McCann Road. The area to the rear of the property, the applicant has preserved some trees and will provide an eight-foot solid wood fence along the rear and side property lines with a minimum of 10-foot buffer. All landscaping will meet requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance. Through the development process, the developer will meet all other City of Longview codes. There is an existing oilfield access road on the southern part of, part of this lot, and it will be shared with this development. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have any questions?
And then, there, this is the previous elevation that was approved as part of PD-19-01, I believe, and so this is the new elevation, the proposed new elevation.
Is the applicant present? Do you have anything to add? Or would like to speak on the request? If you'll state your name, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Jeff Hamilton. I'm with Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated. Address is 1201 Northwest Loop 281 here in Longview. Every time I get a chance to speak on behalf of an application like this, I believe I should stand up here and, and at least make myself available for any questions that you may have. Angela did a good job of explaining what we're doing. We certainly appreciate the commissioners in the past trusting us with this project to, to build what has been built out there, and we're just asking for permission to add a, an additional floor to this second building.
I was one of the commissioners back in the days when y'all first started this that questioned where it was located, and the fact that it wasn't going to have the iron fence around it, and some of the other things. But I'll eat those words, because if you go by, it's a very, very attractive building.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Very proud of it, how it looks.
Thank you much.
Any, any questions, commissioners?
So, is this adding a third story to an existing two-story building?
No, sir. It's, it's a new building that'll be added. But, so the one in, prominent in the, in the rendering is what we're proposing.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, buildings aren't even approved. You're just asking to add a story to it, right?
No.
So, that is correct. The second building has been approved. It's a two-story split level, so they're asking for an additional story, additional square footage, and the removal of that second driveway.
It's actually down the road from where the existing one is.
And that second driveway, the fire department said it wasn't necessary?
That is correct.
They ought to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I now open the public hearing. Is there any support of this request? If so, if you'll come forward and state your name. I see none. Is there any opposition to the request? Again, if you'll come forward and state your name. See no opposition. Any additional questions, guys? Okay, at this time, then we will entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve. We have a motion for approval. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Pass as you'd have us. Bear with us a minute, so we get the chairman back. Chairwoman.
Thank you, Commissioner Noon. Some of the commissioners have to recuse themselves, depending upon the status of the application. Where are we?
E.
We're at E. All right. Give me just one moment. Get caught up here. Thank you. Angela, will you introduce agenda item E?
Yes, ma'am. A public hearing will be held to consider application S-21-06 filed by Jaime Raul Gonzalez, requesting a specific use permit to allow for a one-family dwelling in a heavy commercial zoning district for Lot 11, Block 3, View Crest Edition, located at 2302 East Street. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit. As we've previously stated, the UDC does not allow for single-family in commercial zoning districts by right anymore, and so they're allowed with a specific use permit. So, a specific use permit is required for a one-family dwelling, or a single-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district. As you can see, let me get to the aerials. There are a few houses in the neighborhood. There is one just to the north of this property. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, and therefore does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? Hearing none, is the applicant present? Would you like to tell us about your project, sir?
I'm representing Mr. Gonzalez, and my name's Kelly Flat.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just here in case anybody has any questions. It's, he's just going to build about a 13, 1400 square foot, single-family home there on property he's owned for a while, and that's, that's about all I know.
Any questions of Mr. Flat? Thank you, sir. We appreciate your coming.
Yes, ma'am.
We will now open the public hearing for this agenda item. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support, or anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and call for the motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item F. Angela, please.
A public hearing will be held to consider application S-21-07 filed by Adrian Perez-Lorena, requesting a specific use permit to allow for a two-family dwelling, also known as a duplex, in heavy commercial zoning district for Lot 3, Block 3 of the International Road Company located at 604 East Methvin Street. As stated previously, duplexes are not allowed by right in commercial zoning districts anymore with the adoption of the UDC. However, they are allowed with a specific use permit. If you, let me get to the aerial. This property has been a multitude of different uses, including a single-family home, a donut shop, there's probably a lot of other uses it has been. Currently, the building is sitting vacant, and so staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the comprehensive plan and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? Thank you, Angela. Is the applicant present, and would you tell us about your project? Give us your name and address, please.
Hello. I'm here to speak for Adrian Perez, and our project is to make a duplex. And right now, we're trying to fix the rule for now, and then during the time, we can make a duplex. Any questions?
This is Mr. Perez. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any questions of the applicant?
I've got a question, Angela. Are there residential houses there in it?
Yeah, so directly to the east, that's a law office, but the next block over at the corner of Fourth and Methvin, there's a single-family home there. And then at the corner of Third and Methvin, there's also a home there. And then to the south, there's some multifamily. So, this is an older part of Longview, so you kind of see a lot of mix of uses. You see single-family, multifamily, law offices. It's just kind of a mix of uses in this neighborhood. Yes, sir.
So, it doesn't have to have residential right next to it, just in, in the general area?
Yeah.
How long's the property been vacant?
I don't know. My dad. I'm here to speak for Adrian Perez. I don't know if I need permission.
It's been vacant for a while. I knew that it caught on fire at one point, and it, it's been sitting vacant for a number of years.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Perez. Appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak in support or opposition of this applica, this agenda item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and call for the motion in second.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item G. Angela, please.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application S-21-08 filed by Robbie Greenley, requesting a specific use permit to allow for a spa, salon, or barber shop in office zoning district for the west portion of Lot 3, Block 2 of Walnut Hill Professional Center located at 905A Walnut Hill Drive. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a spa, salon, or barber shop in office zoning to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. The overall site, it is currently zoned office. The future lane use map supports office in this area. The current site is one building as part of this four-suite complex. They do have shared parking and shared access between all four buildings. Looking at the minimum parking requirements set forth in the UDC, it does require one parking space for every 200 square feet for a spa, salon, or barber shop, and one parking space for every 300 square feet for office uses. Based on those calculations, the overall site is required to have 28 parking spaces and has 35 parking spaces, which is more than what the city requires. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the comprehensive plan, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. And just to, just to be clear, this request did come before Planning and Zoning Commission on May the 18th, and the commission did not take action on this request, so I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Angela, if, if the commission, say, approves this tonight, and a similar situation comes up with, say, another beauty shop wanting to use another one of the buildings?
Mm-hmm.
Or any other business, it would have to come back before zoning, correct?
Yes, sir. It would.
So, this, this does not clear zoning for opening it up to anything else at this point?
No, sir. This is specifically for 905A Walnut Hill.
Thank you.
Under that same scenario, if, if either of the attached buildings were changed and went down to a 200 square foot per spot, would there, wouldn't, there wouldn't be enough zoning, or enough parking at that point, would there?
So, we would have to do the calculations, you know. We, yeah, we base it on calculations, and we would make that apparent in the staff report, and we would, we would probably advise that person to probably, you know, look to see where they could find parking at that point. Yes.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Is the applicant present? Would you please come to the microphone? Tell us about your project.
Hi. My name is Robbie Greenley from 905A Walnut Hill. The plan for 905A Walnut Hill is a salon and med spa with operators and individual rooms. The plan for 905A Walnut Hill is a salon and med spa with operators and individual rooms. Medical spas offer procedures that must be performed by a physician, including injectables like botox, chemical pills, light and laser treatments, acne, aging skin, hair removal, and so on. Salons and med spas by definition are licensed by the state of Texas, and must pass routine examinations to ensure proper operating procedures are maintained. The goal is to create a destination where residents can get luxurious treatments and medical procedures at one location. This is a professional business and will be maintained as such. Being part of the Walnut Hill Professional Center, it has its own set of rules and regulations to ensure all owners adhere to the professionalism of the area. Services are offered by appointment only, no walk-in or retail traffic is allowed. Hours were to be Monday through Friday 9 to 6, and Saturday 9 to 1. As mentioned before, parking spot requirements for the business exceed the number of required spaces as set forth in the Longview Unified Development Code. Any business that goes in the location is going to create more vehicles in the area. This is a professional operation, and will have traffic patterns that mimic doctors and dentist offices due to the appointment-only and high-end services offered. Building presence from the road will be as, the same as it is now. The Walnut Hill Professional Center will have the same look as it does now. There will be no signs, banners, et cetera, that are already in place now, as regulated by the Professional Center's rules. Appointment-only operators already have a client base, and would primarily use word-of-mouth and web presence to attract clients. This is a special use permit, as stated, for a spa, salon, or barbershop only, with a med spa being part of that. It is an allowable business, but it does require rezoning and a special permit. This does not change the office zoning rules or requirements, the special permit will not have a domino effect, opening the door for other business types, as only the ones allowed are set for in the Longview UDC. It is my opinion that only high-end procedures and services are feasible in this location due to operating costs and the size of the location. Therefore, a future change or business type, even under one of these designations, doesn't make sense and would fail, in my opinion. I appreciate everyone's time and consideration in this motion.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Greenley, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Are there any residential houses directly behind where this building is?
Directly behind is, is not, it is other medical-slash-professional offices directly behind.
How many operators will you have?
The goal is to have four or five, and then when you get someone, if you were to get a medical professional to do that, they're gonna require a different amount of space, so four to five operators. And I believe initially, when I came before the commission, it was four, but it depends on the square foot, and it can be adjusted depending on what equipment they need, areas they need, chairs, waiting room, going into one of them, that type, so.
So there won't actually be a barber there, or?
You cannot, under definition of a salon, you cannot have a barber, you have to get a dual license. The goal is to get a salon license, so that you could come get your hair done, you can do therapeutic masseuse, you can do that type stuff, by definition, you can only have one masseuse in a spa, but you can't do a barber. And then, the salon would be set up so that it would be many salons licensed, so common areas would be maintained, and then everyone would have their own independent licensed area inside their own room for their business, whether it be, you know, botox, or cutting hair, you know, cosmetology for, for females, yes.
Mr. Green, what was in the building prior to you?
A dentist office.
A dentist office, and how long has it been vacant since then?
I learned about the property in January, so.
Been vacant at least since then?
Yes, and I believe it was before that in June, I'm not, it was, you know, I don't know exactly when it was vacant, and you know, someone else better able to answer that question, but that's when I learned about it.
Does your proposed use violate the restrictions and covenants for the center?
As, specifically or how, I'm not sure.
Your proposed, the salon?
Oh, I got you.
You'll have, you'll have covenants and restrictions right on the center?
It's, it's designed to keep the professionalism of the center, so it may restrict or make it look like that. If you, if I wanted to put out banners and stuff, you can't do that, but I believe there's a portion in there that says you can't do that type of stuff, if it doesn't or does not, I don't intend to do that, but.
But the use as a salon doesn't violate the?
No, 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 it doesn't violate that, yeah.
How many customers would you anticipate per hour, just on average?
It'd be a one-to-one ratio, it depends on the procedure getting done, if I go, right, it wouldn't take very long to do my hair, but my daughter goes, it's an hour and a half and a lot more money, so. It depends on, on the client, so, you know, and.
Just wondering if it'd be any different than a dentist office in comparison?
It's, it's, the setup is to, is to be a high-end salon, so that it would limit traffic, you know, it's not, it's not set up to be where you could go into a retail shopping center, have a row of chairs, and you know, have a lot of traffic to do that, it's different, it's gonna be high-end where it's, you know, one-to-one ratio, when someone comes in, pretty much, it's rotating another person, you know, like that, so it's by appointment, you know, and then come in and out, so.
You're, are you looking at extensive remodeling?
The plan is to remodel to match the business, whether it be a salon, which is what I'm hoping, or whether it becomes an office, or we put it up for rent, yes.
Have you got a timeline?
I feel confident you can get everything done, you know, within a month or two, like that.
So you're saying a salon, or an office, or rented out?
Obviously, I have to get a special use permit to move forward with the business plan, and I have a couple of operators that I went in with the decision of having anchor of the business itself, like that, and then, yeah, obviously, if it doesn't go for a salon, I can't make it that, so it will have to be a real estate investment for me, and then I would lease it to someone else, yes. And it, the business itself was chosen because it has sinks, drains, it has everything set up that you would need for medical, dental, and you know, medical spa or, or salon, it matches all those perfectly.
Any additional questions of the applicant?
Yeah, how many parking spots are actually on this, on your property, not, not the whole site, but just yours?
Angela, let me have to help me with the, the actual legal definition of a parking spot. In the back, you can park two cars parallel, and in the fr-
Yeah, but in the back, I didn't count those spots, so my 35 spots that I counted were legal spots, so I didn't count the two on the backside of his building, because they're in the drive aisle.
But that's 35 on the whole property, but just his lot, how many is there?
There's, there's seven, and there's one that is right on the edge of the property line with one in the front, and then the two parallel in back.
Counting the two in the back?
Yeah, so it would make it, if it's correct, it would be one short of actually qualifying on its own by the parking regulation, and correct me if I'm wrong on that, you know, for the definition of the parking spaces.
One short on its own, but the whole center together makes it?
Correct.
Makes it comply, okay.
Yeah, I've driven by the property today and last week at one point, and the, all the spaces in the back are pretty much taken all the time, I guess, by office staff already, so there'll have to be some shoveling in that parking, because, like, the parking in the rear was completely filled up when, when I was there, and that was like 10 a.m. on a Monday today, so that would have to move to the front, so that kind of cuts into that parking again, but to your point, that is regardless of what business is in there.
Right. And as a salon, generally speaking, obviously, if it's by appointment-only, they will have their own business, but salons generally aren't busy on Monday, and then they, you know, there wouldn't be as much parking on the other days of the week like that, and they would get busier towards the end of the week, which there's not, a lot of the professionals are gone at that time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Greenley.
Thank you.
We appreciate your participation, we're going to open the public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this agenda item? We have received emails, and we have two from, one from Sharon Fussell, and one from Ann Hudman, stating that they feel it would create, would not create any more traffic than a doctor or dentist office, and they don't have any objections.
They both are in the center, the CPAs, and Sharon.
They are business owners.
She lives in the subdivision.
Right, in the same suite.
So that's two that speak in support, two emails. Is there anyone that would like to, that is in opposition, that would like to speak?
I am Mark Dole Weber, 3117 Celebration Way, I am president of the homeowners association in the area behind it, I come representing the association and the neighbors, and they are concerned as far as that, they're concerned about the, one of course is traffic flow, always worrying about that, and we have a little bit of a problem at times with people cutting through, I don't understand why, but they will cut through off of, from Hollybrook cutting over there, to me it seems a hassle, but they seem to do it anyway, and just concerned about the traffic flow, and then two, the second concern that they voiced to me is the, once changing the zoning to the, to it, then the business can then become and morph to do what it, what it wants to do within those, the change, and the neighbors are not interested in seeing that, that, you know, once it is, as he refers to, that it, you know, be a very professional, but if that didn't work out, it can still then go to being a, a tanning, pedicure spa, or other type spas fitting within the guidelines that you would change, but the neighbors are not interested in that, and are against this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dole Weber.
Have y'all ever done any studies on the traffic flow? That's not the main entrance to the subdivision, or the main exit, so how, what percentage of the traffic actually uses, I mean, this, this office complex was built in 1982, and it was a closed street, and they just opened it up after y'all opened the subdivision, or actually David Yow opened it up?
Yes, sir.
But what percentage of the population actually uses that, do you know?
When we say population, the neighbor population, sir?
Neighborhood, yes.
Oh, I, I would imagine that as far as that, I can say, most of my exits, I take and use that drive to leave in the morning, in the evening, coming home, I actually go the other way, just to look and see what else is going on down in that area, we have a tree that needs to be taken down, so it kind of gives me a chance to check, see if they've gotten there to take that down, or just to see what else is going on in the, in that end of the neighborhood, as I'm, you know, down past it, so I, I make an effort to come in off of Hollybrook, but most of the time, yes, I make the turn and go that way, and I think most, I, I suggest a lot of us do, make the turn and go in order to enter and exit the neighborhood. And as it is now, the doctor's offices that are there, there's quite a bit of parking down that street, on the curb, curb parking, and as a matter of fact, the new building that just got built in there, they put up signs, you know, said, no, you know, while we're building, you can't park down in this area, and now that that's been built, they removed their signs, but, so the, I presume that the employees are kind of trying to park up and down on the curb to allow the patients to come in and park in the lots.
In the past, when it was full of doctors, or other professionals like the CPAs, did you ever have any major problem of getting through, or enter out of that subdivision, using that street?
You don't have a problem, but you need to be careful, because anytime you've got people and getting in and out of their cars, and all, yes, sir, then it's, you, it just, you have to be more alert and aware. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dole Weber.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming. Anyone else?
Yes, my name's Robert Hamilton, number four, Dr. Circle, Longview. I have a concern about, as a, as a city as a whole, is how, how, how much office do we have? What percentage of office zoning is of total land use?
That's a good question, I, I wouldn't know just off the top of my head, I would have to do an analysis.
Well, based on your comprehensive planning of 2015, the current was at, 2015 was eight tenths of 1%. And I think if we want to be a growing community, we need to have more office, and I don't think it's a good idea for us to grant a specific use with the limited amount of office zoning that we have.
Now, the comprehensive plan talks about just that zoning district, office zoning district, but office uses are allowed in all commercial zoning districts, office and above, so if you were to, if you wanted to put an office in heavy commercial zoning district, you would be allowed to do that by right. Yes, sir?
Well, and specific to this area, I think we should do, have more profession, more zoning for, you know, these kind of lawyers, doctors, physicians, it just seems to me, we don't have that kind of, as a city, as much as we should have, if we're gonna be growing, and I was just looking at the comprehensive plan, and yes, I know you can put a, you can put a medical office in industrial, or whatever, but, who's gonna do that? So, that was my concern, and, and still, there is a parking concern with that, because you have four operators, they're gonna, they are gonna move, they're gonna have to park in the front, and there's gonna be, there's gonna be an issue with that.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Do we have anyone else?
My name's Jeff Shelton, I'm at 905 Walnut Hill, I basically have the same concerns that I did two months ago with the parking and the sharing of parking, the number of operators there, with the way they deal with every hour, and the issues we have with that already. I've been in that, I think since 2013, I've been in there, I'd like, it's been medical professionals, we have Dr. Devol Pally and Dr. Plan at the bottom of the hill, Dr. Bob Shelton was there and me. I would really like to see it stay medical, is how I would like it, and again, I, you know, expressed my concerns with the parking on that, so.
Do you have any idea how many employees they had when it was a doctor's office?
Yes, sir, 'cause I happened to work in that office for a little while before Dr. Bob passed away, so he had a hygienist and himself, so he had two providers.
Had how many, I'm sorry?
Two providers. Dr. Bob, Dr. Bob and his hygienist, two providers.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions of Dr. Shelton?
Is the traffic on that, that road pretty congested Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Anyway?
There is usually some sort of people parking in the no-parking area, I, to be completely honest with you, usually I'm in the back working, you know, but I know when I leave around lunchtime and things, it can get that way, when both of the physicians are there, and I'm there with two hygienists, it can be, we have signs of, Dr. Bob had, I'm sorry, Dr. Bob had Dr. Shelton's patients, and then I had mine, just to try to keep people from moving back and forth, or making it where some of our, especially our older patients are parking on the street, and then having to walk across, you know, to get to our, to get to our office, and the same thing I'm sure would be consistent from Dr. Plan and Dr. Devol Pally, too.
Is it a parking issue, or is it a business issue?
Both. I would like, it's, it's a, it's a medical professional complex, I'd like for it to continue to be that way.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Anyone else? That would like to speak in opposition, or in support of?
I'm Ann Brown, and I live at 3203 Celebration Way, and on the right-hand side of Walnut, it says no parking anytime, and there's people parked there all the time, trucks with trailers that are not with the construction site that's on the left that was going in, I'm talking in the middle of the day, or in the afternoon, they don't pay any attention to the no parking, so they end up with cars on each side of the road, and it's- the road, and it's not safe, and where are the police when they park there, I don't know, but it, it doesn't just happen every now and then, it happens all week long.
So, so you're saying there's already a problem there?
Yes, there is. People pull out from those, and they, maybe they've been to the doctor, maybe they're old, I don't know what it is, but you really have to be careful, because they pull right out in front of you, they don't give signals when they get to the stop sign at fourth, whether they're going to the left or the right, so you don't know whether you can get over here and turn right, or get over here and turn left if they've parked in the middle. It's just a whole lot of traffic, and I don't think we need more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Anyone else?
I'm Martha Cochran, and I also live in, on Celebration Way, and my concern is I moved there because of the medical facilities, and I think it should stay that way. I'm also concerned about the traffic. It wouldn't necessarily affect where I live as far as them pulling through, cutting through the area, but it is done a lot. I do help take care of people in need, and I'm in and out all hours of the day and night, and there is congestion, parking on the street, and I think it should stay medical for Longview's sake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cochran. Anyone else? We do have emails also in opposition, and just to summarize, they're concerned about the parking issues, heavy traffic through the neighborhood, the possibility of future evening and weekend hours of operation. And this would be from Nell and Dan Poston, who are residents of Celebration Way, Rhonda Lawrence, also a resident, Rick Lawrence, the same, and Patzy Rutledge, who lives on Coven Haven Circle. Any other comments or questions?
Can I ask a question, Steph? Angela, on the, going back to a few comments made earlier, the reason this would have to be rezoned to retail, the services proposed in the medical salon, it wouldn't be all of those services make it be retail. If they were doing acupuncture, Botox, that would still be under medical office, correct?
Uh, yeah, that would actually be under a salon, spa, or barber shop, and so they're not asking for a rezone to retail, they're asking for a specific use permit, yeah, specifically for the spa, salon, or barber shop. The office uses would still be allowed, and then an acupuncturist, we would probably consider that more along the spa, salon.
So all of the services that Mr. Greenley outlined, each individual one would make that fall under the special use, none of those would have been allowable under the existing zoning, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, unless he is a true, like, a doctor's office.
A doctor's office.
Yeah, or an office in general, I'm sorry, excuse, excuse me, offices, you know, office zoning is not just a doctor's office, it could be a CPA, it could be an engineer's office, it's an office setting.
If he was doing Botox in there, it would have to be a, a doctor doing Botox injections for it to be licensed under the O, the office?
Yes, that's correct.
And then one other question, if, if the recommendation is approved as presented, is there any restrictions then on the number of operators that could be in there, or any other?
No, I mean, they would just follow state guidelines.
Just state guidelines, okay.
One more question for Steph. So if this does get permitted, does it stay with the building regardless of ownership?
That is correct. It is, it is based on the land.
Right, so if, if it gets permitted and he ends up renting it out, then a barber shop can move in?
That is correct.
Those five-dollar haircuts and those type of things?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Oh, excuse me.
Trace Vincent, 825 Jimmy Drive. A question I had was, in the situation where, once it gets spot-zoned or special request, and the, and the building sells, then can anybody else within that zoning can do what they want to do and change their hours, right?
So this is not spot zoning, it is a specific use permit to allow for this use at this location. This request does go with the land, and so if Mr. Greenley, if this were to be approved by Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, and then Mr. Greenley decides to sell this, this use would go with the land, so the salon, spa, salon, or barber shop would go with that piece of property.
Right, so in that situation, they could change their hours if a new owner was to purchase the building?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Any other questions or comments? This is your opportunity. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and call for the motion in a second.
Make motion to deny?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh.
We have a majority.
Yes, ma'am, six to one, I believe.
Six to one to deny.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Thank you. Our next item is a staff update.
Thank you. The one item on Judson Road was approved by City Council.
Any other comments? We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.